It's a plastic table.
Oh, that's weird.
Yeah, that's weird. The March 12th, 2013 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempt Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner.
Here.
Mr. Mihawk.
Here.
Mr. Sparassia.
Here.
Mr. Tuttle.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes, here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 12th, 2013 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempt Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received, for their review and consideration, the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System, known as Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Channel 96 in Mentor and Channel 22 in Mentor on the Lake. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. Thank you. Need a motion for approval of the February 12th, 2013 regular meeting minutes?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sparassia.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes. Hearing of the public on any item that is on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move along to the Superintendent's Report and Recommendations. Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President and members of the board. I have the following recommendations and recommend approval of consent agenda items 5A1 through 5A5.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihawk.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. President, members of the board, March is Youth Art Month, and we would like to recognize our outstanding visual arts students. A lot of those students are here with us this evening. The secondary art department has been involved in several competitions, and we have the good fortune in that some of the students have brought their prize-winning artwork to share with us tonight up front. I have asked Mr. Wade, along with Mr. Shaw, to make the presentation.
Mr. President, members of the board, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, it's my pleasure to call up Mrs. Kane to this podium to help me award these students who are with us tonight. As Mr. Miller said, March is Youth and Art Month, so we're recognizing our award-winning students currently enrolled in secondary-level visual art classes. As we have the artwork up front, many of these awards have been, students have been busy participating in four major local, state, and national competitions. The first local competition that the students participated in was the Graphic Art Contest, which is the Benny Awards, for Cleveland area high school students where graphic artworks in the categories of printing and graphic design are judged. The printmaking students are from MHS and took the top awards, first and second, in the printmaking category. The first student with us tonight that we'd like to recognize is Jasmine Frangos. She's an 11th grader who took first place in the printing category. Jasmine, if you could come up, please.
Taking second place but not able to be with us tonight was Nicole Hoppsaker. Nicole is a 12th grader, and she took second place in the printmaking category. The second local award show was the Lake and Geaga County Secondary Art Awards at Lakeland Community College. It's an annual jury show where 450 works of art are selected from about 600 entries by young artists from 20 high schools and middle schools in Lake and Geaga Counties. Local art teachers, including teachers from Mentor High School, Memorial, Ridge, and Shore, volunteered their time and effort to run the show. 127 Mentor students' work were featured in this show. Mentor students received 46 honorable mentions, 27 gold seals, and 34 blue ribbons. The students with us tonight are recognizing one of the highest awards of cash and/or scholarships. The following students earned a $500 talent grant from Lakeland Community College. 12th grader Brandon Mesner, Jasmine Frangos. As we said, Jasmine was already up here, and she won for the Benny Awards as well. So if Brandon could come back, come up, and we can recognize him, please. Jasmine, if you'd come back up, we have another one for you.
Come on up. Nice job. Good job.
Congratulations.
The $300 talent grant was awarded to 11th grader Caleb Borgh who could not be with us, but Shadia Kokabani, grade 12, is with us, and we'd like to call her up to recognize her. Maybe she's not with us. The $200 talent grant was awarded to Rebecca Conti, who was unable to attend tonight. She also won the Gold and Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. So congratulations to Rebecca as well. The best-of-show, grades 10 through 12, was Mesa Kokabani. She's a 10th grader here in Mentor High School, and she also is in the top 25 in all of Ohio for this piece, which will be a part of 300 students' work in the Ohio Governor's Youth Art Exhibit in Columbus. So congratulations to Mesa, who is also not here. Best-of-show, grades 7 through 9, was Claire Sharpneck. Claire, please come up, please. Also best in Lake County was Josh Furness. Josh, please come up. The national competition that our students were in was the National Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. They have encouraged young people to pursue their passions, providing opportunities for recognition, publication, and scholarships, inspiring creativity. As we said, we had two winners, one of them being Rebecca Conti. With us tonight, Lisa Ton, grade 12, received the Silver Key for her portfolio of artwork. Both of these students also have worked, chosen this past weekend, in the Ohio Governor's Youth Art Exhibit in Columbus. Again, these are only 300 pieces across the state of Ohio, which are selected for this show. So this is a testament to their artistic abilities. We'd like to congratulate them as well. Lisa, if you'd come up, please.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Mr. President, members of the board, we have three students who have qualified for state competition this winter in their respective sports. We will begin with the wrestling state qualifier. Mr. Wade, along with Mr. Casella and Mr. Shaw, will make the presentations.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, it is my pleasure to introduce a member of our wrestling team who qualified for the 2013 State Wrestling Tournament in Columbus. But head wrestling coach Jim Capel and wrestler Colin Kramer join me on stage, please. Colin ended the year with a record of 30 wins and 13 losses. He was all Northeast Ohio Conference selection, he was a sectional champion, and placed fourth at the district tournament. Colin ends his career here at Mentor with 128 career victories and was a two-time state placer. On behalf of the athletic department, we want to congratulate Colin on a great season.
Mr. President and members of the board, every year we hold a Cardinal Challenge Competition between our three middle schools. Congratulations to this year's winner. I'm sorry. I don't have that one on my list.
Sorry.
It's okay. We're in education, we're always flexible. And I should know this one. Tonight, we're going to, next, we're going to recognize our Mentor High School student, Maria Coy, as a swimming state qualifier.
It is my pleasure to introduce a member of our girls' swimming team who qualified for the state swimming and diving meet in Canton. Would head swim coach Kristen Smudge and swimmer Maria Coy please join me on stage? Maria qualified for states in the 200 intermediate and 100 breaststroke. She has lettered in eight individual events this season as a Cardinal. She was an all Northeast Ohio Conference in the 200 IM and placed 13th in the state in the 200 IM, giving her All-Ohio status. She currently holds the school record in the 200 IM and the 100 breaststroke. This season, though, she also broke the school record in the 200 freestyle and the 500 freestyle. So fantastic season, Maria. Congratulations.
Next, we get to recognize our gymnastics state qualifier, Madeline Marshall. Mr. Casella?
It's my pleasure to introduce a member of our gymnastics team who qualified for our state gymnastics meet in Columbus. Would assistant coach Megan Mertz and gymnast Maddie Marshall join me on stage, please? After battling injuries throughout the season, Maddie joined the team right, again, right before the sectional meet. After the whole team qualified out of sectionals to districts, Maddie finished 10th on the beam and 15th on the bars to qualify for states in those two events. At the state meet, she finished 22nd on the bars. Earlier this season, she was also named a News Herald Athlete of the Week. Only a freshman, we look forward to many more great seasons from Maddie. Congratulations. That concludes my portion of the agenda.
Now, Mr. President and members of the board, every year we hold a Cardinal Challenge Competition between our three middle schools. Congratulations to this year's winner, Memorial Middle School, and many of their staff members are here tonight. I'd like to ask Mr. Porter, along with Mr. Shaw, to begin their recognitions.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Mr. Miller, Mr. Wilson, it's my privilege this evening to recognize Memorial Middle School on again winning the Cardinal Challenge Event, which was another good competition this year. And a lot went into that, and we're appreciative of all of those who contributed. To join us on stage, I would invite up the principal of Memorial, Mrs. Kathy Burnett, to help us recognize the Memorial Team. If the students would come up and accept their award and line up across the front until all the members of the team have been called up, that would be great. First, the advisor of the team from our staff, Ms. Danielle Sharrett.
In our 6th grade, participants include Alex Edwards, Morgan Larrick, Mario LaCreszi, 7th graders, Gianna Baroni, Mandy McGee, Leica Medarametla, Lilian Miller, Michael Petty, Nick Reidenhour, Olivia Sandry. And our 8th grade participants, Rachel Beller, Nick Clayson, Elizabeth Gorchip, Wayne Ho,
There's a few parents in the back. You have cameras. If you want to come up for a second, you can.
Congratulations to Memorial.
Next, we have the privilege of recognizing the spelling competition winners. We are very proud of all of our students who were able to participate. Mr. Porter, along with Mr. Shaw, will make the presentation.
Thank you. Again, good evening. We're going to have our grade level winners come forward, and in grades 6, 7, and 8, we also have alternates. And while our spelling champs from each grade level and the alternates are here on stage, we will also then recognize our district-wide competition winners from the group that's on stage here. I would also like to, at this time, invite up the principals who may be here to help recognize the winners. From Bellflower, we have Ms. Heather Hardy from Shore, Mr. Doug Baker from Memorial, Ms. Kathy Burnett from Ridge, Ms. Megan Kinsey. If those principals would feel free to come on up if they are here to help us. And again, if our spellers would stay up on stage and line up across the front until all the spellers have been recognized, that would be great. First, our 4th grade winner, Nathan Rolfes from Bellflower Elementary School. And our 5th grade winner, Dia Chakrabarti from Bellflower Elementary School. And our 6th grade winner, Nicole Jarris from Shore Middle School. And our 6th grade alternate is Nicole Perdina from Memorial Middle School. Our 7th grade winner, Devon Messner from Shore Middle School. Our 7th grade alternate, Noah Rolfes from Ridge Middle School. Our 8th grade winner, Eamon Bracken from Shore Middle School. And our 8th grade alternate, Keisha Dalal from Ridge Middle School. And we had a very competitive district-wide competition this year. Our alternate for the district, our runner-up for the district from 5th grade was Dia Chakrabarti from Bellflower Elementary School. And then our winner, and I could say it's the first time in several years that we know of from Bellflower Elementary School, that we've had a 4th grader, Nathan Rolfes from Let's give a round of applause, please, to all of our spelling champions. And that concludes my report.
Before this next part of our meeting for recognition, if I could just ask, we have three guests in the audience, if they could come up to the stage for this next presentation, Mr. President and members of the board, tonight we would like to recognize the Mentor Middle School Athletic Booster Club for their donation to the school district in the amount of $91,848.93. The donation represents the hard work and efforts of many parents and students during this group's existence over the past seven years. This donation will be set up into an account outside of the athletic department's general operating funds. The funds are to be divided evenly between our three middle schools for items like athletic uniforms and sports equipment. On behalf of the Board of Education, the administration and staff, we recognize and appreciate your efforts over the past several years, and thank you for your donation tonight. Thank you.
I just wanted to throw out a couple special thank yous, myself, for the principals of the middle schools who supported us over all these years, the athletic directors who also offered a lot of their support and assistance in getting those volunteers together and helping us with our programs and fundraising. And also a special recognition to Rick Zalecki, past president, and who was there to guide us along every year in the process of our fundraising. So, thank you, and now we work here at the high school.
Mr. President, members of the board, I have asked Mrs. Pam Farrell to update you on the Status of Our Race to the Top Grant. Hato, I'm sorry, Pam Hato. No, Pam Farrell.
Well, which?
Pam Farrell, come on up.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, it is my pleasure to update you on our Race to the Top work. This year has brought us new acronyms from the ODE, such as OTAS, LEA, SGM, SLO, to join all of those that we currently use. Race to the Top has four application areas, and I'd like to address each one briefly. Application Area A is the Transformation Team and Communication. We welcome new members to the team from the Mentor Teachers Association as some of their executive board member positions changed. Mr. Miller and I represented new administrative members. Each meeting reinforced our ability to speak frankly with one another about our work, and we have all enjoyed the benefits of the transparent communication. We have adopted an all-in-this-together attitude, and we are doing our best to understand and implement the many changes coming to us from Columbus. Application Area B, Standards and Assessments. The curriculum department and instructional coaches have worked very hard this year to understand the Common Core and Ohio Revised Standards and create aligned curriculum maps. Math and English Language Arts maps are almost finished. Each map includes a timeline, resources needed, common formative assessments, and they are really becoming works of art. Sciences Social Studies started the mapping process this year and will continue to work on refining their maps next year. Application Area C, Using Data to Improve Instruction. We have only recently learned about something, again, from Columbus, called the IIS, which is a new acronym I forgot on the list, Instructional Improvement System, which is to be a large online warehouse for teachers. It should hold curriculum maps, resources, assessments, and assessment data. We have participated in the introductory webinars so far, and the state hopes to roll this out in the 2014-2015 school year. And we look forward to learning more about it as it looks very promising and user-friendly for our teachers. Application Area D, Grade Teachers and Leaders. This is the area where we have been working very hard to not only understand it for ourselves but to be able to distribute this information to our teachers in an understandable way. You may have heard of the OTAS model, which is one of our new acronyms. OTAS or Otus stands for the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System. Principals started their staff meetings this year sharing a very colorful graphic of OTAS created by the ODE, and I have a copy for each of you. In this system, 50% of a teacher's evaluation would come from observations. Two formal observations are required and also informal observations, which we call walkthroughs. This is shown on the left-hand side of the chart. The other 50% would come from student growth measures and is shown on the right-hand side of the chart. Both measures come together to give a teacher a final summative rating. In January, our teachers took part in a half-day in-service where they learn more about both sides of this graphic. All of our principals have gone through the mandatory three-day training for the observational or left-hand side of the system. We will continue to hold trainings and work with teachers so they have a firm understanding of the entire system. We are working with MTA on the Mentor Teacher Evaluation System, which will probably be called MTES. This plan would go into effect next year. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Pam, it would be safe to say... Pam, it would be safe to say that a lot of this has evolved during the course of this school year, not really what we were presented with in August?
No, exactly. It reminds me of the book, Who Moved My Cheese? And just when we think we found it, it got moved again. So, we're struggling to keep up. They have a very tight timeline on us. And it's Race to the Top, and we're doing our best to keep our greatest teachers from racing to the door. It's been very, very interesting this year. And I look forward to bringing you more updates as we continue our work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Pam.
Yeah, at this time, we'd like to have a short break. If any of the students want to go ahead and get back to doing the great work that they do, and the staff wants to go back and grade those great papers and projects that they receive, now's the time. So, we'll take a few minutes. All right, we'll resume the meeting then. Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Mr. President and members of the board, I am recommending that the agreement with the Hiram House for the 2013 Outdoor Education Program for Sixth Grade Students be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. President, members of the board, as we have for the past few years, we apply to the state to waive one full day during the 2013-2014 school year. This coming school year, that would be November 5th, for professional staff development. I am recommending approval of a resolution for a request for that waiver from the Minimum School Year Regulation set by the State Superintendent of Public Education to provide professional staff development.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. President and members of the board, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item 5B11, which is a resolution accepting the District Window Replacement Project Bid. The successful bid was submitted by AM Door and Supply Company.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. President and members of the board, I am recommending that for the 2013-2014, the school year calendar be approved, with the first day for students being August 21st, 2013, and the last day for students being May 30th, 2014. I'm also recommending approval of the 2014-2015 school year calendar, with the first day for students being August 20th, 2014, and the last day for students being May 29th, 2015. The Calendar Committee reached consensus in two main goals in developing the calendar. The first one was to get the first semester of the school year in before Christmas break or winter break. The second goal was to get more education days in front of the Ohio Achievement Assessments and OGT and end-of-course exams that we take in the springtime. So with these calendar approvals, those goals will have been met.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. President and members of the board, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1, related to Certified Licensed Staff, and C2 through C4, all related to human resource matters.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President and members of the board, I am recommending approval of the Administrative Staff Reappointment Book for 2013-2014. There is one slight change. If you have the book on page three, there are three people listed for one-year contracts. For legal reasons, those should all be two-year contracts. Aside from that, everything is as stated.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Finally, Mr. President and members of the board, I am recommending approval of the Exempt Staff Reappointment Book for 2013-2014.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
This concludes my part of tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Moving on in the agenda, the Board of Education Report and Recommendations. Any new business? I don't believe so. Legislative report? Mr. Tuttle?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, there are several pages there to the legislative report. I'd like to call your attention to one item there, and that's the Choice Provisions. I'd like to read that to you. Two new voucher programs would be established in the proposal. It's an income-based voucher beginning in fiscal year 14 for kindergarten and first grade students in FY '15. This would allow students in every school district in the state to take a voucher to a private school without regard to the performance of their resident school district. While the payments for the vouchers would be paid directly from the state, not from the school district funds, the program will continue to divert public tax dollars away from the dollars available for public education funding, with no accountability for how the money will be spent or whether or not the student will have a quality choice. I just wanted to reiterate that. We've discussed that point before. I would ask that you contact, if you agree that we oppose that, please contact our state representatives, John Rogers, and also Ron Young, and any other state representative you may know or state senators, so they can push back on this in our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Moving on to the Chief Financial Officer's Report and Recommendations. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. It's recommended that financial statements for the month of February 2013 be accepted and placed on file for audit.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education ratify the investment transactions for the month of February 2013 as presented in Exhibit 7-B.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the interfund transfers listed in Exhibit 7-C.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the appropriation modifications listed in Exhibit 7-D.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the supplemental appropriations listed in Exhibit 7-E.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education recertify the tax rates for tax year 2013 to be collected in 2014 as presented by the Lake County Budget Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education authorize a treasurer to collect unclaimed funds as listed in Exhibit 7-G.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
That completes my audience for tonight.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Any unfinished business? I don't believe so. Any new business? Hearing none? Hearing of the public on anything anybody wants to talk about?
We do have a guest tonight, if we could start with him, from the Mentor Alumni Association, the new president, Roger Kondick. And he's going to take just a minute to introduce himself, and we appreciate all the work that the group has done in the past, and we're excited that he came tonight. Roger?
I want to thank you for allowing me to have a few minutes this evening. As I mentioned, my name is Roger Kondick. I was just elected as the newest president of the Mentor Alumni Association. We're a nonprofit organization. We raise money throughout the year. We hold different fundraisers. We have a presence at the Science Olympiad selling food. We also sell Mentor Alumni paraphernalia. And this April 18th, we will be honoring the newest six members into our Hall of Fame. This year's members that will be joining the Hall of Fame are from the class of '75, Irene Carl, from the class of '80, Peggy Welch Kelly, and Pan Virent Ricard, from the class of 1983, Joey Longo, and from the class of '84, Carolyn Buckse Ducey, and finally, class of '92, Lisa Klammer. During the course of the year, we look forward to getting names nominated to us, people who have excelled not only in high school, their college coursework, and on their job, but people who have given back to the community. And we look forward, this April 18th, to recognize those individuals. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other hearing of the public topics? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to go into executive session to discuss negotiations. So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
We don't anticipate any further action tonight, so thank you all.